Twenty nine, twenty twenty two at seven P M has been provided in accordance with the requirements of chapter two thirty one, public laws nineteen seventy five. Notice that the meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the principal's office of Belmar Elementary School, under one Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on January eighteen, twenty twenty two. Notice that the meeting was transmitted to Asbury Park Press, the post star, the municipal clerk of the borough of Belmar, and the Lake Como School District on January eighteen, twenty twenty two. We have the flight.
The United States of America, to do what the public wishes stands. Our nation under God, indivisible, that we defeat our trespasses for all.
Will they please have the roll call?
Sir, got it?
Here.
Can I roll that?
On, here.
Superrecheck. Brian Conklin?
Here.
Dana Fenn? Professor Herbert?
Here.
Asha Lomas?
Here.
Jennifer Nickle?
Here.
Barbara Preston?
Here.
Asha Cartier.
Oh, no, I mean, I can do the first one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have the first public comment on agenda items only. Just to remind everybody, because there have been more public meetings recently, just want to read a statement, which is, of course, that the board welcomes comment on items relating to school issues, but the public should know that the board is not permitted to respond in public to comments about individuals due to privacy concerns. And also, please understand that the board will not be responsible for the content of comments made by the members of the public, and members of the public are cautioned that are they are speaking at their own risk, and any personally directed statements may make them subject to whatever liability to the affected individual. And that being said, are there any comments on agenda items? No, so we move on.
Okay. Superintendent?
Superintendents, please. Yep, so we had a great start to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Really exciting last few weeks. Back to school night last night was excellent. We had great attendance. So many people came out. We had a graffiti wall on the way in. Our P T O is here. We had a couple of groups. Our teachers did an excellent job, you know, welcoming our families and parents to the school. It's really nice to see like a full school again. You know, at back to school night, the last coming back to school nights I had were virtual, and they just didn't feel right. And this felt right, you know, get to know the teacher, have your child, and get that sense of, hey, this is like, feels great. So it was really nice. Another update on aftercare, I have a meeting on Monday, an operations meeting with implementation specialists and the account representative I'm currently working with. So that's moving along. It's been a caritid month, started on September fifteenth, and it goes until the middle of October. And as you've, any parents that came to back to school night, you'll see that the building has had a lot of decorations, a lot of programs, we've had some posts. It's really been excellent, you know, a lot of support from our school community, and our community has been a caritid month. And then, you know, the facilities updates have been many. We're really proud of the work and the parents of the building. If, you know, taking a look around from where we've been the last couple of years and where the outside of our building looks now, it's really come around. It's going to take a couple of years for those plants to mature in the front of the building, but the end result, I think, is going to be excellent. And I think it's really showcased the commitment and the effort to make it, to bring B S around. After the construction projects eat up a lot of our time and, and resources, it's nice to get back to some of the maintenance pieces that make the building upgrade. Next, we've got a presentation. So there's quite a few things in here. We have a H I P self-assessment, access scores, N J S L A scores, district goals, and then Q S A results. So there's quite a few things here I'm going to kind of run through one at a time. Our H I P self-assessment, so basically harassment, intimidation, and bullying, there's a document that the state gives us to give, so that we can assess our own ability to meet the goals by the state. And basically, they have five areas that they focus on, H I P programs and approaches, training for student staff and stakeholders, curriculum and instruction and prevention, H I P personnel, which are the people that in our building that get trained to do this work and support students, and then school-level H I P incidents and investigation and reporting procedures. Some of them have different points, depending on the category, you'll see that some of them are more weighted. And for scoring, basically what they're saying is that each area will have two points, but you can get up to three. So for instance, there's five indicators in H I P programs and approaches. If you get two points, that's ten total, you can get up to fifteen. So basically, the state says, hey, you got to get two points in everything in order to qualify and do what you're supposed to do. So if you did that, you score fifty-two, and you're in compliance with what the state wants, you can get up to seventy-eight points. But pass it would be forty-two.
Right. So what's the, what, like, what, were there certain areas where we didn't score high enough?
So, yeah, so let me, let me kind of tell you what we did score. So we did score seventy-three points. It's twenty-one points higher than the state requirement. So what I found, and I was the H I P lead in my last district for the last eight years, is that some of the pieces and some of the, some of the elements aren't worth spending the time if you're spending the time on the right things. So I, we have to prioritize where we spend our time and our resources. And if we're spending in the right places, we've created a culture for students, we've got protocols for students, and there may be things that really aren't necessary, and we are meeting the necessary requirement, but to get a perfect score here doesn't matter if you have H I P incidents and an issue in a culture that doesn't work for your school. You can, you know, the paper can say whatever you want, but it's about what the community and how it feels here at the school, and whether we're doing what we're supposed to. And with this score, this is really high. You know, typically, you might see upper sixty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine in successful schools. You know, seventy-one, seventy-three is very, very good. A perfect score isn't necessary. It's really about what do we need and where do we want to spend our time, and I think that this is a really good indication of where we are.
Do we set a goal?
For, for this, I mean, we can. It all depends on where we spend our time and where we set our goals. I'll show you where our district goals are, and they're more in line with the strategic plan. If this was something that I felt was contributing negatively to the school culture here or how we operated, I would say, yes, let's create a goal for that, because that's an impingement on like where we want to be. Here. And so P B S I S, our counselors, quick response to conflict. Being in a small community school, our teachers know our kids really well and know when something's up. Just like you know when you walk home and your kid walks in the door and you see they're walking a little differently, or there's something about them wanting to turn a corner and get to their room before you catch them, the teachers do the same thing for even little kids. They know when something's up, and they're going to address it early and quick and get people involved, representative programs, messaging, and clear protocols and compliance to the law. So this, to me, is very successful. This should be a score that we should. Next, for B S, bring access scores. So access scores are for our English language learners. They're not a very large group of students. I mean, they make up a percent, a decent percentage of our students, but we're talking in each grade level, eight, seven, nine kids. So if I cut this data down any tighter, it could be to the point where I'm kind of identifying students. So what you're going to notice is grade level scores and trends. So like I said, this is for E L, English language learners, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, what you typically expect for students to be learning and working on. And we use this to inform our E L L programs here. What level of need do certain kids have? Are they just getting started? Are they emerging? Are they really getting their language skills up where they need less support? This will help us identify that. And so these are the little six levels, enter, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. Reaching, you're almost out of the program. So we're going to have those different levels. So for instance, kindergarten to first grade, twenty-one, these kids went kindergarten, now they're in first grade. Well, you'll notice that ninety-two percent of our kids were entering, and a lot of those kids, same students mostly, sometimes they could move in or could move out, that could change. But what you're noticing here is a pattern where the vast majority of our students are really at level one, and then many of them are moving up. This is really great. You'll find the same trend happening in our other grades, where, hey, these numbers are getting bigger as you get lower to the bottom here. And take a look here, now we don't have any kids in zero. These kids, we had quite a few kids here, and now a hundred percent of our kids are there. This student might have moved out, it's not typical for them to regress in language learning, you know, languages they're using on a daily basis. But these are the kinds of trends that you're seeing, is that often our kids are starting to move closer to expanding and bridging. So my conclusion, our students are receiving excellent support and services, and are advancing really well. Next, we have our N J S L A scores. So I'm going to talk about this in a few different ways, right? We've had N J S L A in two thousand nineteen, it's been a few years since we had it. Now, how I'm going to talk about it is I'm going to compare us to the state in two thousand nineteen, and then I'm going to compare us to the state in twenty twenty-two. There's not any other indicator for me to really say, I need a benchmark, and the benchmark has to be the state. So the state scores changed from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-two, and so did ours. The question is, how did we do in that comparison? So I'll show you a few things here really quick. So five levels, if you're level four, you're meeting, five succeeding, three is approaching, and these kids might have been like one question off in some cases. We had kids at seven forty-nine, seven forty-seven. Like, could you have just gotten the extra, you know, one question right and moved up? But that's okay, that happens every year. And then these are the students who need some support, and these are students who are really struggling quite a bit. So two thousand nineteen B S E L A, the state's score was fifty-seven point nine, we're sixty-one, we're three percent, more or less three percentage points above the state in math. The state was forty-seven, we were thirty-six point nine, we're about ten percentage points behind the state in two thousand nineteen. The good news is, in two thousand twenty-two, we're still at thirty-seven percent. Pandemic and everything, we stayed the same. The state dropped ten percentage points, so now we're at state average. What does that tell us? Whatever we did in math during the pandemic was successful. The half-day program where we prioritized math, and we said, hey, the kids are going to be here, we're going to have to work on E L A and math, and then the other stuff has to get put on the sideburner because we only have them for a certain amount of time. This is telling me that our math instruction was really strong during that time, if we're gaining ten percentage points on the state. Here, we did lose, in two thousand twenty-two, we're right about the state average here, less than one percent off. Now, the only problem is that we did have a little bit of a loss. So loss or gain versus the state, we're three percent below, we're point nine percent back. So we're still in okay shape. That's not a big drop for E L A, and you'll see why in a minute, and I'll explain which grade level or what area we were having that struggle where we lost a lot of our points, but the math gains are really impressive.
So this score is the one above the line?
What's that?
When it says sixty-one percent, our what?
Our four or five, above the line. Yep, exactly.
All right, so we still have to work on, in good case?
Correct. So, and, you know, so basically what we're doing is just comparing ourselves to the state. And then, so I'll show you more specific data on the, on what those levels look like, and what percentage of students reached four and five, right? So we're always going to be saying, you've reached or exceeded, and where you are. So where were we in two thousand nineteen? Couple areas were green, we're above. Couple areas were red, which is, you know, probably seven percentage points off. And then there's one yellow here where we're like, we're pointing out, that's pretty close considering the amount of students that we have here. It's not that many, so one kid could be the difference of that yellow. One more kid gets passes and gets that one question right, all of a sudden, we're in the green. The red is kind of telling us this is not just one kid, right? We have to work. So this is just a graph, so you kind of have a sense. And then, so two thousand twenty-two, where are we? A little more green, some yellow, and still some red, right? What are we seeing here, though, right? We're seeing that the third and fourth graders in general are the students who are struggling. What grade were they in when the pandemic started? First and second grade. What are you really learning in first and second grade? Basic math.
Everything you need to learn.
Everything you need to rest your entire life. So for me, what this tells me is that we have to focus our intervention here. Everybody's going to get support, and we're going to have a support system for everybody every day. Especially in our lower grades, they're going to have an intervention period that's for everybody, but then we're going to say, hey, we got to focus extra attention to these kids. They missed out, they probably got hurt worse. These students had those foundational skills, they got kindergarten first and second grade, and, you know, they had the skills to be able to follow the teacher online. This is hard to do, you know? So this is an area of focus, and you'll still notice here that there's a couple of things that we have to work on maybe. And, and the question is, do we have to focus on programming or students? Right? Is it the second grade and third, third and fourth grade curriculum? Or is it the students because of the pandemic? My, and what I think is both. We have to evaluate our system. Is our system, is there something about our system that doesn't work? And how do we, you know, help these kids out because we know they're struggling, right? We have to do both. And so that's kind of going to be my focus and our goals, is to say, how do we put, you know, help students, put Band-Aids on them, but make sure the next group of kids doesn't have scrapes to begin with.
So then when we get information from next year, we'll have a better idea of people done the grade from grade and what they're doing?
Correct, yeah, because I could connect the two thousand nineteen third graders to the two thousand twenty-two sixth graders, but that's way too many years. That's a big last.
And plus the pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, I think that trying to follow those kids is really tough, and that's why the state doesn't want to give M S G P scores, which is usually the score you give for kids' growth. They'll be able to give us that or give us an idea of their growth following. So the difference, where do we gain ground, where do we lose ground? You're noticing the same place where we lose, lost ground. If we can bring these kids up, and we gained so much ground in so many other places, and we're close here, and maybe that seven, three E L A, we have to figure out, okay, was it a couple of kids in that particular grade that really struggled? Maybe there were only so many kids that took the test, and we had a few that were really close. That could make the difference. But this is where I'm going to be focusing my main tier-two, tier-three intervention outside of, you know, where are your interventions? Pushing the class, doing small group work to help kids catch up.
Do we dive into the scores? So if you're looking at math, you go, wow, it's red, and you look at the questions and say, fractions, we are all.
We do. It's great that the state is giving us reports where it's saying, hey, all of your kids took this question, and you're below the state on this particular question. So I shared that data with the teachers, I said, this is not, it's not public data, it's professional data, but I said, take it with you, I want you to identify the areas that we feel like, hey, our programming's lacking. Oh, we don't teach statistics in sixth grade until June. Okay, what does that mean? You're going to have to do a little two-week statistics, kind of the basics of stats, let's say, before the test, so the kids have a chance to meet the, the grade standard.
If there's a student who thought the business very poorly, you'd not share the questions, the subjects, that they don't go for student?
They don't go that deep. They'll tell me, they'll, they'll, they'll tell me how a student did, and then they'll tell me the types of questions that they struggled with, but they're not going to give me question for question for that student. So it's kind of like, you're trying to triangulate with the data you have, but you'll know what kids struggle with, you just may not know exactly, hey, it's that particular standard for that, or what particular question they got. But we can surmise, we can get pretty close. So, so this is basically it, right? We're doing really well, and we grew in comparison in some areas. We lost some ground, intervention, lost the ground, and we're close, a little bit of intervention. That's, you know, it's got to be one of the capabilities. Okay. Any other questions on N J S L A? Q S A. So Q S A is basically, it's called Quality Single Accountability Continuum, where the county and the state come in and say, take a look at our school districts and see how we're doing, right? One of the things we don't have as much control over when they come, it's about performance of programs, and it's about student growth and how they did. Luckily, we used pre-pandemic scores when they did our Q S A evaluation, and what we were doing is we were growing. We need to get eighty percent on any, on every category. This is the one that has to do with our performance and our growth, so we did meet eighty-one, which is good. And so this is part of what they told us. You've exceeded eighty percent value in all five performance areas, you're considered high performing. We're not going to come back and visit you for another three years because we trust you. If there's an area that's below eighty percent, they're going to say, hey, we're going to stop back next year and take a look at this and see how you're doing. And so this is good news, this is telling us that we're on the right track. If there's a couple of things that they don't like the way that we did that, hey, you might lose a point here or there, but what you'll notice is things that we have a lot of control over fiscal management, governance, personnel, operations, we're doing really well, and we're clearly over the eighty percent. Anything that isn't there, we get feedback on, and we can make those improvements. Okay, district goals are going to be aligned with basically what we saw. So these are going to be the things that we're going to be working on. Develop with fidelity, authentic, collaborative, learning-focused culture, professional practice at B S to improve student achievement and engagement. This job is too hard to do by yourself. Teaching is not what it was in the nineteen eighties. It's not a one-room schoolhouse, it's not Little House on the Prairie, it's too difficult, there's too much. We have to have people work in teams. All of the research about education is telling us we need to have teachers work in teams. Doing this alone is too difficult. So we're trying to create that culture here at the school. Everybody's been in the little bubble and the little pot in my classroom. You keep your kids with you, I'll keep my kids with me, it's COVID, we're not spreading. We have to get back to collaborating with our peers for the better of students. To develop and work on a collaborative grade level and continuity group to identify essential standards. Now, this is what we're going to do when we get in those groups, identify what's most important. If you were to teach every standard that the state had a couple of years ago, you'd be in school till you were twenty-five. You can't, you have to decide what's really important, and we need teachers to do that work. You need them to understand what's really important, what can't you leave third grade without, and that's what we have to focus on. Because if we're focusing on dioramas so that we have a fun project, but not really spending the time on the things they need most for the rest of their entire lives, then we're missing out on something. So that's what we have, I mean, dioramas are fun, okay, and you guys love doing them at home and gluing those little fingers in the box. But nonetheless, the most important work we have to identify with is to spend most of our time on that. And then continue to develop and implement R T I support. So response to interventions, which is what I was talking about. Tier one's going to happen for everybody. Tier two and three, we're going to be focused intervention on those students who struggle. And N J S L A data is important, but we also have our own internal data, high-ready data, other assessments that we give that'll help us identify where kids need support, and this R T I system will help us do that. Our interventionists are going to attack. These next two years, we still have S R funding, we're going to try and use it as best we can to get those kids caught up and help everybody else keep moving up as well. The green areas still are going to have some support, but the ones that are orange and red are going to get their, you know, get a little extra because they need it.
Actually, I'm just being a little bit new. Do our teachers find out when they go to math school, midnight, wherever they go, what those schools are teaching? So at the end of the year, they're like, I feel comfortable, they know what they need to know for the next year, or they just go by the state guideline?
Um, I'd say their problem, I'd have to get back to you and see what kind of articulation we have with the high school on what skills they want from our students. I know that for our algebra professor, we're comparing up what they need. Eighth grade math is, you know, we have to say, okay, we've got to dig first where we're at and say, what are, what's really essential? And we'll do that articulation here in the building, because our fourth grade teachers know what they want their fourth graders to be ready for and what they need to know in third grade to be successful in fourth. So our grade level teams will actually, you know, talk vertically, vertical articulation is what they call it, where you're going to say, hey, can we work on this? And everybody kind of says, this is the problem I'm seeing with this particular grade. So the good thing is, is our pre-K program, we've been doing that, and our pre-K program just got a lot of kudos from our interventionists who are leveling our students and saying, these kindergartners are more prepared than any kindergartners we've ever seen before because we've had, had a pre-K program where the kids know their letters now, know that, know how to count to one to ten, understand the alphabet better than they had before. So those are the types of things that you want your kindergarten teachers to talk to your pre-K teachers about. And then what are the gaps that we're missing? What can we focus on? Yep. So, and these goals are going to be basically my goals. You know, the district leader, this is important, this is important for me as well. So the district goals are basically my goals. I'm versed, actually, set, set, go along with them, about what we're going to do, scheduling, structurally, culturally, professional development wise, these are the overarching goals. Oh, I think that's it. Look at that, you guys got one. That was the last one.
Took me a while.
I took a while.
Lost all my time with me.
All right, let me turn this thing off. I get excited about data, I'm sorry.
That's good, that's good. So we just want us to keep seeing it going up and up. Okay, do you have any other report? Or is that it?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. And I guess you have important dates on the agenda at the end, so can we have someone move to approve the minutes for the August twenty-fifth accordingly? Testing. I don't know. Okay, any comments, corrections? Roll call, please.
Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Otis?
Yes.
All right, and we discuss the personnel items.
Personnel, so we've got a few things here. Rika Perez, who's a B S alumni, is now, he's in education, is school of education, but he would have to help out with the coach, and help out with the coaches and volunteers, so he's, he's on there. We've got some substitutes that we'd like to add to our list.
You can add it if you want, I would like to add to it.
So I spoke to another person today who was interested this afternoon, who had been apparel with us before, Jennifer Lawrence, so I'd like to add her to the sub-list of a pay of one hundred twenty-five dollars per day for her substitute as well. And that's good. Hire, replace teachers. We have a revised maternity letter, and that's it.
Are you teachers and parent professionals?
Parent professionals as well, yeah, so just in case we have a need before any of these meetings.
Someone move the personal items. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Otis?
Yes.
So who's going to go over the policies?
Yep, I will try and be more brief than I was for our presentation.
I'm just kidding.
So fourteen of these policies are mandated by the state, and so, but, you know, we've got a quorum in there, Board of Education website accessibility, that's A D A compliance, Every Student Success Act, dress and grooming. You'll find dress and grooming and a few other things twice, one's for staff, one is for, one's for certified staff, and one is for support staff. So that's why those numbers are a little different. Care for school properties, student journalism, which replaced, which one did it replace? Schools sponsor publications, so that's just a change in policy. Harassment, intimidation, and, oh, I'm sorry, just care for school properties, student journalism, emergency virtual and remote instruction program, which is just an update, they're trying to, you know, just make sure that if we have to shut down our schools for whatever reason, probably not even COVID-related, let's say there's a gas leak, and they have to work here for three days, is it possible for us to switch to a remote or virtual and keep the days? So there's some guidance in there from the state. Title one, there is a postnatal accommodations for students, which I had some questions about at first because our students are fairly young, but I was reminded that it is possible, and so I kind of said, fine. It seems a little new for a kid eight, but. Student intervention and referral services, which is what I was talking about with RTI, it's a change in language. They don't call it IRS anymore, RTI is the new IRS. Response intervention for students. Examination for cause for having people, somebody evaluated. Harassment intimidation and bullying. This one probably has the most updates because it's a form that the state wants every school to use across the state. And so we have to make that form available now. And so part of that update is there. And then there's some restructuring in the policy. But the, the big parts of it are really that. Some consequences in how they shuffle it, but most of the language is fairly similar. And then there's a recording for initially evaluation that the principal can do without having to do a HIP investigation if there's a misunderstanding. Or really turns out it's not really a, with HIP, it's more conflict. And it's very clear they can designate it, not doing the investigation or reporting. Emergency crisis situations, cooperation with law enforcement agencies, which is really important. We do have a lot of that. We actually cooperated with them about an hour ago before a meeting. Lesson plans and plan books, people discipline code of conduct, which is a regulation change. And so part of what that is, the code of conduct change, has to do with not being in a lockstep situation where if it tells you an infraction, what you have to do for step one, the first time they do it, second time and third time. What we know is every single situation is unique and different. And so what this change in code of conduct is gonna offer us is the ability to say, okay, who has to respond to this situation the first time? If kids are late, who has to respond the second time? Let's say we just level two and then the third time. Some things go straight to the administration, principal and police department, right? If that happens, it's gonna be on there. But we can't have a lockstep situation because we don't know that every situation's gonna be the same and it requires the same response. So all this does is offer us administrative judgment on each situation to balance, you know, the development of the students and then, you know, take, take action there as appropriate. And then care for school property. There's some, uh, a few other pieces there, school sponsor publications and a safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings. They changed from what was the COVID policy to, it's more of keeping track of things rather than full emergency response, which we were in for a couple of years there. That's the gist of all of our policy changes in that meeting.
And what are the dress and grooming changes?
So dress and grooming, let me pull it up.
There's two.
So dress and grooming for both of them have to do with more unisex language. Instead of saying, men can wear a collared shirt, a tie, and so they kind of get away from specifying females and males. It's just like, you have to dress professionally and you should be groomed professionally. So it's more about unisex language and, um, yeah.
All right, can somebody move the policy items? Preston, any comments or questions?
Will we vote on these? We can say no to, we can say yes and then take one out.
Yeah, you can separate them. Mike will ask for a separate vote on it. Or you can just say which one I'm gonna choose if you can. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes, and then I'm gonna abstain from, um, the, the postnatal accommodations.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes, but I'm gonna abstain from P24164101.
Ms. Herbert?
I'm a yes for all except for the postnatal and the no.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes. Just a question about how extensive is that? Is it a breastfeeding one with it?
Yeah, it's just making accommodations. And so in the past years, they've made accommodations for teachers, let's say, that are coming back. And we have to make sure that they have a room, that they have an opportunity to have a club just in case they need it. And that type of thing, privacy. Is it typical, is it likely that'll happen here? Very unlikely. Is it possible? Yes. And so that's really it. It's not a mandated policy, but it's just one that's recommended by Stroud Sessom.
Yes, the rest of the policy is for kids, for the students.
For the students, right. They had it previously for adults, this is for students. Which might typically happen in a high school. Much more likely to happen in a high school where you have, that's what they're gonna happen.
Yes.
That's your correct.
That's your hope, yeah.
Yes. Yes, yes, yeah.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
All right, operations, education items?
Okay. The revision of the BES code of conduct, which mostly has to do with that chart. And so regulation has to be in line with the code of conduct because we wanna make sure it's supported by the code of conduct.
How will that be communicated if there are changes to?
It'll, it'll be, we can send the code of conduct out to everybody with those changes. We're operating under the current code of conduct, the previous one, but we have it ready. Everybody can see it as well. Approval of district goals and in this case superintendent goals, which are the same. Who wanna add that to that line? Approval of HIP, self-assessment score, which is shared. Travel, professional development, field trips. To have our psychiatric evaluations through Dr. Richard Worth. Approved the cross-country fuel meet at Silt Lake in Belmar in October. Remote instruction plan, which is what we talked about as well earlier in the policy. We wanna have a plan just in case so that if something were to happen in any building, it's an, it's an opportunity for us to head in that direction. School security plan, which we do every year. Got some staff members and how they're being paid. You'll notice that there's a lot of ESR in there. That's the funds that are kind of helping us offer more support for our students in these years to make sure we can try and get them back on track. Textbooks for St. Rose, which have to run, run through us. Oh, we have some tuition students in there for 15 and 16. IDA grants and reports. First aid approval from our new doctor, Dr. Orem was approved during one of our summer meetings. So we have standing orders from her with our nurse, and then this is another nurse annual services plan. And then our server support for our computer system with MacPro Vanzano and our technology consulting.
Somebody move the operations items. Herbert, second. Any comments or questions? I've seen them, roll call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, and the finance items?
Yes, our finance, we have the monthly board certification for the month of August. And then underneath it, for the resolutions, we have the first resolution for the bills for the month of September for 1.29. Number two is the board secretaries and treasury report for both the month of July and August. Number three is the transfers for the month of July and August. Number four is just, and number four is the monthly certification again for the month of August.
Okay, I'll move the finance items in a second. Lomas? Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickle?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert, you have a MAFS report?
A short report because the meeting does cut short because we lost our quorum. Someone had to leave and MAFS didn't have enough of a quorum to continue voting. But they had the student board representatives come in and were sworn in, two of the three were there. Which is nice because they have students that represent students and bring things from the board. I don't think so.
Yeah, it's one of the policy updates for, for high schools.
Yeah, I, I think it's great.
I don't know, I just said anyone from Belmar.
I don't think any of the graduates.
I can say their names in public, right?
Yeah, if they were public.
It was Ed Gennell, he's from Springling Heights. Margaret Bodnar, I don't know what school she came from originally, and Mary Ann McCarthy.
Is it Ed every grade or sort of like one person that goes around the place?
So I, these were all older, I, I think Ed, I think they might all be seniors, actually.
I forgot what the rule is, but it's just certain amount of representatives that you're supposed to have in that school.
And then they announced the students of the month and the teacher of the month. They had their audit presentation by Hulsart and everything was good, so they're doing a good job there. And as far as the field house, they, as of last week, oh, they're just waiting on the final inspections to be done. I think it was one final electrical and then the final building, so I don't know if that happens since the 20th. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Any other course findings? Any old business matters?
Isn't that the, like, what happened with the tennis?
Yes, so.
It's convenient.
How convenient to bring that up. I wanted to talk about that in new business, too. So one of our parents came by, she was like to volunteer a time to offer a tennis clinic for the BES students. And I was talking to Will about that might be a great opportunity for us to gain, get some interest and then get a student interest survey after the clinic to see if we can talk, talk about a spring team. I talked to the superintendent, they said they'd be willing to create some matches with us. And maybe this would be like the, an opportunity for us to get a little something going, see how many kids are interested and have enough kids for a team. I think she's waiting on sponsors with some materials, but I talked to her and Sarah's been talking to her quite a bit about, you know, we can use the basketball, our basketball courts as a place to practice even, setting up temporary nets. And using that, I was like, of course, you know. Instead of tracking over somewhere, you can keep the kids here, save time. So there's a bin on the forefront of, you know, different pieces of what we can do. This would be more of a, a nice thing to offer if she can do it. And then what I'd like to do is try and launch something from there and say, okay, who's interested in being part of the team? If we can do that sooner rather than later, then, then I'll wait for that to happen, if it'll happen this fall. If it's not gonna happen until the spring, then I'll get the student interest before that because I'm gonna need to get the ball rolling. But I'm really excited about the opportunities to have a tennis.
I think that, this improvement, is there any chance, future thinking, that, that Mr. Bassington has one of his classes in the tennis and the?
Well, that, that's what it might be, it might be during the day. It might be like, hey, let's bring that certain grade out and, you know, we put a schedule together so that the kids could have the opportunity to learn some skills from somebody who's been doing at a really high level. And just, it's just a, a nice piece, a nice community piece to, to add and, and maybe it would help launch it to.
Other schools in the district currently have teams?
Yes, yes, they do. Some of them were sponsored by their, by like a PTO or some kind of local parent organization and then it turned into a school team. But, uh, yeah, they do, there's a few, a few that have teams noted by Michelle a little while ago. And I reached out to them and I said, yeah, we'll, we'll put you in the mix. I was like, okay, great. And I talked to Mr. Trogo from the town and he said, we'll make time and schedule the courts for you guys. So I think there'll be an opportunity there. We have to, it might be a little tight on, on where we get to play, but the practice is basically where we have.
It's just like pick a ball in the right gym.
Right.
And make it work and maybe actually like, you know, one person hits a buns and then the next person hits and.
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll, we'll figure out some way of it, but.
Any other old business? Any new business?
Do you wanna add that to the new business or approval of instructors to?
Yeah, did you want us to vote on it?
I guess, you know, just like we're voting on having, um.
I mean, I meant now.
Yeah. Because it could, it could come to fruition in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So I'd like to have it approved so that if it does, we can make it work.
So how were you afraid?
To approve parental tier compressions, to volunteer a time to offer a test clinic for BES students.
Okay, a second. I'll move that, you on the second. And any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nickle?
If I could just add, I know a lot of the coaches in town that teach our schools, St. Rose, et cetera, and let's say they're, they're 100 tennis balls. When they know that they're not as new, they literally dump them, throw them away. So I think if it happens, it's a great place, they're resource free, to kind of advertise for people to donate, et cetera, present, yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, um, any other new business? All right, any comments from the public, I mean?
Other question, on one of the policies, it is, it says title one, dish fly parent and family engagement and then Belmar, on the dish fly one, student, student, parent and family engagement. What are those programs or is that a program or what is that?
So title one is for usually funding you get for frequently used lunch.
Right.
And so you can choose to make it schoolwide or targeted assistance. We had an evaluation done a few years ago about how our programming is working. And we were targeted assistance, using the funds in particular areas, trying to target specific skills that kids had or after-school programs that were targeting students who were struggling. And for, let's say, a really large school district, they might say, hey, let's use this for school-wide programming for everybody. But I really feel like targeted, and the assessment told us that targeted is best for us. And then the family engagement piece, I think it says, goes from parental engagement to parental and family engagement, knowing that some kids don't live with their parents. And they might live with their aunts, uncles and grandparents or whoever that might be. So that's just a language change. The other piece has to do what's the best fit for how we use our funds. And so targeted is, has been the best way for us to operate instead of the school-wide funds. The students still benefit, it's just.
So it's really just still for the students, it's not for like a family?
Correct, yes. It's all about student instruction. Our after-school programs, our summer programs where kids come back for extra help that are not ISWID would fall under those title funds. And some of our staff, too.
One more, one more question. Um, the technology, the consulting, the LLC?
Yes.
Is that for the teachers, is that for the school?
That's for our server system.
Oh, okay.
Now, Kevin O'Donnell is a master wizard at just about everything to do with technology. And, you know, if I ever have a problem, I call him. But servers are a specific beast. And you have to have somebody who really knows what they're talking about and that can service them and keep them up, up to speed. It's, it's a whole different skill set. And so this consultant would be able to do maintenance for our servers, make sure we're up to date and in, in a pinch, they come in to help out. Typically, you know, what they're doing is a couple hours, you know, in a, in a pinch or emergency.
Does that person or Kevin do the security piece?
Kevin does the security piece with our cameras, but a lot of our camera systems.
No, not security cameras, computer security.
Computer security, Kevin is excellent at that. It's really more about our hardware server system. And we, we trust them. And it's local, it's.
I'm sorry.
It's just.
I have a question. We're still not saluting the flag, we jack on hearing from a lot of students. Is there a reason?
You mean the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
That would be news to me.
Okay, but wait, let's, we'll talk about that on the end, but let's finish the public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We can go back to new business, I think, when you.
I meant, yes, I should have, I'm sorry.
Any other public comment or were you done?
I'm nothing.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, is there an update on the bricks? The second round of bricks that were supposed to be, oh, the bricks.
What did we, what did we talk with the contractor to do the cement? And they're gonna put the bricks in front of that, right? Yeah, so we're just still waiting for, um, Emilio to come back and to help us out to, to finish playing those up.
Okay. Yes. Question about the basketball court. When are the students allowed to use it? Because I have a younger student and an older and none of them are, have ever really been on it.
They go out there for recess.
They comply?
Oh, yeah. The teachers take them out for recess every day, everybody gets a 20-minute recess. Especially the small kids are always on that side of the, on that side of the building. And so, you know, if they wanna go out there, they can, they just, the teacher goes and supervises them. I go out there and sometimes shoot it around with the kids.
Okay. And is it ever available after school, like when the kids are fine?
So this is the tricky part, right? Because the school you're at, the school day ends and then if we're gonna keep it open, we're gonna have to have it supervised. And the problem with that is that people wanna crank, because you can crank those down for the little kids. When they go off for gym or recess, you can crank them down. But, you know, the middle schoolers, they wanna knock it down to eight and a half feet so they can get somebody to take a video from down here. Looks like a slam dunk you went on a 10-foot, 10-foot rim. So, and then they're hanging on it like Shaq back in the 90s. And, you know, like, so. The curse and, you know, the great side of it is that it's there and available for kids to use during the school day. The tougher side of it is that it's not open to the public because those mechanisms are easy to break if you're just hanging on them, which I know if we leave it open, if we leave the gates open to the properties, could happen. We could, you know, we can discuss what options there might be in the future for something like that.
For, yeah.
But them being so new, it's kind of like having a new car, you know? You don't drink coffee in it for like a couple of weeks. And then you're kind of like, all right, let's start drinking some coffee in here. There's something about it that, you know, we can, we can evaluate.
Okay.
I'll take that out. We, we do, but they're not very good, but the new ones will be much better. So, yes, I don't wanna talk about the security cameras too much because of where they don't hit or do it. But the new ones that we are getting installed will be able to view that. So, and to go back to your question too, during the summertime?
Yeah.
We had, we were having construction going on, building the concrete side, basically sidewalk walk area that's around it. So we had to open up the fence. There was two times I had to go out there after the school was out where the gates were locked and kids actually climbed that really tall fence and went over and I had to unlock it to get them out. They were nice, they said, oh, thank you for being nice. Nice, nice to meet you.
Should've left them in.
But, but at the same time, like, that, that kind of causes like a little liability on us because they climb that fence, falls, they get hurt, we're in trouble.
Yeah, I meant more just like right up, because the kids play on the plant, I mean, they're jumping off the top of the high playground thing. I have a second grader, so I sit, I have to stand there with them. And these little kids are out there every day, so they're doing that and then they're trying to play soccer and stuff. I almost feel like they would be better in a place where they're not jumping off the top of the slide and jumping off the top of, because all the parents want to stay, it's nice out, you know, let them run around for like a while. But I'm sure if the basketball court was open, you're going to have the bigger kids too. You know, like mostly it seems to be, like my older son's like, I'm not even coming over on that side. You know, they don't want to. But a lot of parents have been talking, so I'm like, I'll ask, you know, just to see if it would be available at all.
Yeah, we'll have a discussion about it and say, okay, what are our concerns?
Yeah.
And what are the, you know, what, what could we consider and if we wanted.
Because there's no way to like lock them, huh? When they have a crank, like to not let them move from the position?
Maybe we could do like Monday, Wednesday, younger kids in, right? Maybe. It's like, I think that.
We'll brainstorm and look at it.
Yeah, we should definitely do something because everybody works hard.
The main reason I love it that it's open, let's say till 6:00 PM, whatever it is. We're familiar with lots of great playgrounds in Belmar, but one that we see, especially that older kids kind of gravitate to is the airplane one, over 35. I can't cross to get up well, slow, but like you can't run real fast if it's a really dangerous road. And I constantly see our kids, people I know on bikes try to get across. And they play on the airplane. It's terrifying. And I just feel that if they did have some place to go, especially when it's, but that's, I would be all for it.
Well, at one point, we might want to talk with the people at the town hall too because at one point we had part of the playground open at certain times and I think they helped us out by having one of the police officers nearby or some, I don't know.
I feel it used to stay open late, not for 10, like more than 10.
Somebody was there and it was like for real. So they could.
Like at a certain time.
Hope we can look into it, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, then we'll go back to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought it up before. But the boys were telling me that, and no, the first students, they weren't doing the Pledge of Allegions and then they said the next year, I said, why don't you tell me this? So not all the last, and then it wasn't just my boys, I've been hearing from other students, that they went to the Pledge of Allegions and.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Why is it, is it a requirement or what, it is just protocol or?
I think it is. Unless she objected.
I've never, I've never even thought of questioning whether I should look it up, whether it's a requirement.
There's used to be one, I don't think.
Is it, is it done on an individual basis in each classroom or is it done like over the loudspeaker like in the movie Grease where they like?